It's 5:30, so it's time to start the meeting. This evening Jessica is going to be online, so I'll be filling in for her. So could we have the roll call?
Counselor Bossmans.
Present.
Mayor Buell.
Here.
Counselor Woodruff.
Here.
Mayor Protem Yasi.
Here.
And Counselor Yusuf.
Here, thank you.
Could we have the reading of the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement?
This is a call to honor and respect Indigenous sovereignty and self-determination. As residents and visitors of Durango, we are called upon to educate ourselves about the history and cultural heritage of the land we inhabit. The city of Durango is situated on the ancestral homelands and territories of the N'uchu Ute, Hicarria Apache, Apache, Pueblos of New Mexico, Hopi-Sinom, Hopi, and Dene Navajo nations. The original stewards of this land were forcibly removed and exposed to countless atrocities by the United States government, including repeatedly broken treaties, forced assimilation, the tragic legacy of Indian boarding schools, and the loss of ancestral homelands. We recognize lasting generational trauma exists within Native communities today. We affirm the continuing importance of ancestral sites to descendant communities as integral to the living cultural landscape. This acknowledgement only becomes meaningful when combined with accountable relationships and informed actions. May this serve as a step towards inclusion and reconciliation.
Could we have the translator?
Yes, hi, this is Liz Torres and with my colleague, V Torres, and we'll be interpreting today from English to Spanish. We want to thank you for your commitment to language justice, and this means that everyone has the right to speak and be heard in the language of their heart. Today, we're on Teams online, and if you wish to select interpretation, go to the More menu, which is the three little dots, and you can select Language and Speech, and from there you can select the interpretation language. If you are on a cellphone or on a tablet, you can also select it from the same place. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Liz Torres y estoy aquí con mi colega V Torres y estamos aquí con la Cooperativa Comunitaria de Lenguaje y les queremos agradecer por su compromiso con justicia del lenguaje, que significa que todos tenemos derecho a hablar y ser escuchados en el idioma de nuestro corazón. El día de hoy podrás seleccionar el idioma de su corazón por medio del menú de More, the must, que son los tres puntitos, y de ahí seleccionar el idioma que necesite. Muchas gracias, y podemos comenzar. We can go ahead and get started.
Alrighty, thank you. Are there any remarks from the council?
Hay alguno otro comentario del consejo?
She did. Alrighty. Are there any open remarks by the council or the mayor? Okay, great, we'll move on to number four. Information only, presentation by the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. Ben.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll actually introduce Sylvie Bossmans and Mira Quail, who are members of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission.
Secretary, um, this fall, we have had a lot of new faces on MIAC, and we now have representation from Big Picture and DHS. Sylvie Bozmanns and Willa Anderson were both elected as co-chair of the commission, and I was elected as secretary, so taking minutes, all that. And then we have another member, well, not member, he's treasurer and his name is John Womack, and that is our kind of commission for the year.
We have several upcoming events and some events that we've already done this year that have been pretty successful. One of our upcoming events is our annual snowdown event, which is pretty cool. It's called Hand on the Van. We collaborate with the Durango Police Department on that. Shout out to Sergeant Sweetwood, he's awesome, we could not get that event done without him. Yeah, basically, it's a competition between kids four to 10, everyone's welcome to keep their hand on a police vehicle, and there's prizes. It's gonna be super cool this year, it's happening on January 31st at 4:30 PM. And then, we did also have another past event that...
Yes, that was Nerds Night Out with Community Engagement and Library Luke, and we did that at Esoterra, and that was to kind of facilitate engagement in Durango activities. Another activity that we're currently putting on is Cowboy Poetry, which is elementary schoolers, and as of right now, we are mainly focusing on advertising it and getting the word out to all the schools in the area. I think we do have entries coming in at the moment, but they're not, we haven't scored them yet.
Yeah, Willa Anderson is the main lead on that event. Yeah, another upcoming event that we have is a potential forum to address the youth's part in the 2005 tax re-oth forum. This would be an event where we would sort of get the youth's perspectives, like high school students, on the 2005 tax and where it should be allocated, what we should do with it, should it stay in Parks and Rec, should it be something else? So that would be sort of a lunchtime interactive event where we would creatively get people to come and basically tell us what they think. We would sort of do like voting of like maybe Parks and Rec, something else, or we haven't really decided completely yet, but it's gonna be a really cool event. And then, our last upcoming event and sort of partnership with Parks and Rec, Will is also leading this one, but we've done a couple events with Parks and Rec in the past, like a youth meet the coaches event, and we're looking forward to collaborating with them more and possibly hosting another event this year, but undecided what that will be.
Yeah, and then another thing we're doing as an extension of the Nerds Night Out is to make it kind of more geared to the teenagers in the community for at least one event. We may be hosting our own Nerds Night Out trivia, and we would be trying to get people from high school and middle school age range to come to that event.
Yeah, and those are all the updates that we have so far.
Thank you.
Wow, they sound excellent. Thank you for your involvement. Any questions?
I just have a comment. I'm so excited to hear about the possibility of chatting with the students at DHS about the re-oth, I think that's such a great idea. And I would, if, you know, I would think that if you guys want assistance with that from City Council, I'm sure that Council would be very happy to help. And also, you know, it would be a really good opportunity to very clearly lay out, you know, pros and cons for them to know all of the details behind what will be on the ballot to get their input. I think it'd be really important, and we would sure love to hear what they have to say.
It'd be awesome to get your input on, maybe give us a little bit of context.
Yeah.
We're not really super familiar.
Sure, there's a lot, it's a lot, and there's a lot of history there, so I'm sure that Council would be very happy to do that. I know I would, and I'm sure other councilors would as well. I'm not the representative to Mayor's Youth anymore, but I know that Council would be happy to do that. Like I said, I'd be happy to if other councilors don't want to, but I think it's important in getting student involvement. It would be a great process to help them learn about the whole, the way it all works, and what, you know, what we will be voting on in their community, very direct impact.
Exactly.
I am not biased, but that was a fantastic presentation.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, number five. Number five, we have City Manager update.
Yeah, yes, Mayor, I do have a couple updates to give today. First off, we'll start with Tom Slus, our Public Information Officer. He will be showing the 2024 accomplishments that we will be releasing here shortly to the community to let them know what we have done in 2024. So for all those times when we take those budgets and we approve the budgets, this is the work that shows that comes from that. So I do thank you all for your support on the budget and be able to report back to our citizens of the things we've been able to accomplish.
I'm Mr. Evan, I would move this. Good evening, councilors, Tom Slus, Public Information Officer for the city. So historically, as some of you know, we have sent out a recap every year of basically our accomplishments, and we've really broken it down previously by department. It's really been a recap, kind of a quantitative analysis in terms of number of potholes that we paved, roads that we plowed, permits that we filed, which is great information. But this year, what we did is we took a slightly different approach, and what we wanted to focus on really was more of a storytelling approach. And the goal here is to tell the public, we heard you in terms of the concerns that you have brought to us, and this is kind of a highlight of how we have acted upon that input in your, in your interest. So to that end, we created what's called a flip book. I don't know if you've seen these before, but I'll show you if you haven't. It's basically just an interactive social media site where you can go through every page and kind of skim it at your, at your leisure. So this page, which you can't see, I hope you can see it on your monitors up there, is basically just the first page you're going to encounter, and I'll walk you through all the interior pages too. So what we have, of course, is your typical table of contents. We have a message from the City Manager, just kind of give the high-level approach. And then we went immediately to the content in terms of what we have done. And housing, of course, based on our community survey, is the number one topic of residents. So what we did was we provided a highlight here of the 408 units that were specifically approved by Council for the local workforce. Includes everything from the residences at Durango all the way to the Rivergate subdivision and everything in between. So again, we kind of did triage in terms of what's the most important thing to the community. Housing, of course, is number one. After that, there's, I'm biased, the next one is, of course, Keeping You Informed from the PIO. That's not necessarily the top number two of the public, but we threw it in there. So the, the key here was to really just let the public know that, of course, their voice is what does shape the future of Durango in terms of the policy decisions that you all obviously will take into account when you're making those decisions and what you hear. So we promoted the City Council office hours, we had 20 of those, the new walk and roll with the Mayor Program, 224 public meetings, mentioned C Click Fix and how we responded to those concerns. Orange Cone Report, of course, was directly a result of concerns people had about Florida Road, so we said, that's great, every week we will do this report so you can kind of check out what's going on in the city. And then, of course, you know, you've heard our social media numbers, it gets old after a while, millions and millions, they know, so it's there if they want to check it out. After that, we have Keeping You Safe. One of the mantras we hear from our police is we are a small-town city with big-city problems, and I think no one's gonna really disagree with that. It was mentioned even today on social media. So we just gave a high-level overview of, of course, our problem-solving court, which we're, I think, we're most proud of when it comes to our municipal court and the efforts they are undertaking, as well as some data from the police on the community safety efforts related to traffic contacts, traffic accidents, and DUI arrests. Environment, of course, that is, as you know, very important for Durango's residents. So we did a high-level review of how we are working to protect Durango for future generations. Of course, everything from our e-bike program to energy performance contract, zero-emission vehicle transition plan, and of course, the ongoing spring and fall cleanup, which is very appreciated by all residents. And we added just a generic category here on businesses and how we are helping to create the environment within which they can thrive. Of course, a lot of this gets back to, you know, Mike's onboarding with the city as our prosperity officer, because he's gonna be overseeing housing, tourism, and economic development in general. Airport is probably the biggest item in there with just, again, record growth, and you know what that means for the economy in terms of not only the leisure traveler but the business traveler. We mentioned community development, now putting the permit application process on OpenGov also, and then tried to frame the Florida Road rebuilding within infrastructure. I know there's gonna be some pushback on that, but it really is important for people to understand that when they have those delays, there's a reason. You know, I mean, roads need to be rebuilt, utilities need to be rebuilt, et cetera. And I think our last part was about the character of Durango. I know there's ongoing concern about as we evolve and grow, what's gonna happen to that? So of course, I think the number one interest that we saw from PIO was really the purchase of Buckley Park. You know, preserving that for future generations really resonated with the community. I don't think there was anybody who opposed it, I'm sure there was someone, but we were very proud of that. Mentioned, of course, the conceptual design for the high school. Durango Mesa Park, as you know, huge deal for the character of Durango, Indigenous Land Acknowledgement, and LTAC, Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Funding, that helped get all of those great murals around town. So that was really some good highlights. And finally, the community support funding. 2024, we had over $300,000 that we gave back to the community for the various nonprofit groups, a lot of support. We don't typically message that out a lot, and we probably should in terms of, I think it's February typically, Council gives those requests from United Way, and then we announce it and move on, and that's it. But it's a lot of money, there's a lot of support coming from the city for the nonprofit groups, and it's definitely worth mentioning. That is really it in a nutshell. We're gonna go live with this, planning to tomorrow, and it'll be mobile-friendly as well as desktop version. And any questions? I'm happy to answer.
I just, I just want to give a big, huge thank you, Tom, to your team for putting this together, then also the executive leadership team and the staff for all their hard work. I think it really shows the importance of a budget, what it does and what it allows us to do, and then being able to report back to the community on some of those higher issues that they've really told us were important to them, and showing the meaningful steps that we've taken to get, to get better in those areas. So hats off to the crew, to the city, it's a great organization, and I'm proud of the work that we were able to accomplish in 2024.
Really nice to see it laid out like this, it looks, it looks excellent. I'm wondering, will you please share it with Council?
Absolutely.
So that we can have a copy of it? I really like, it's excellent, it's so nice to see it all in one place like this, so thank you so much.
Thank you for that presentation, I agree, looks short and sweet. I have one question for you, can you go back to the page with the environment, protecting the environment? Might be a mistake, or under fall cleanup? If I understand, and just, this is maybe not something that you know the answer to, but if the fall cleanup is all green waste, and it says 169 truckloads to the landfill, is, is, is that an error, or is it all the green recyclable tree trimmings and so on? Do they go to the landfill?
My understanding was that was to the landfill, but we do have streets crews that do make separate pickups, so I'd have to follow up with you on that, because we did have an inquiry about people who wanted to get access to that wood pile. So I mean, it's not everything going to the landfill, but I'd have to get you exact numbers within that 169, unless Marty knows off the top of his head, you know, or Joey. Yeah, I'd have to follow up with you, because we do realize that people want some of that mulch, and we have made efforts to make that available, particularly up at the cemetery.
Yeah, no, I, that's good, I appreciate that clarification.
Awesome, quick-hit view of 2024, great job. Really gives me a lot of pride to see what we've been able to accomplish as, as a group. And then, yeah, looking forward to kind of seeing what 2025 and beyond brings, but yeah, thank you for putting this together to remind us, you know, what sort of impact we are providing as a municipality, you know, both Council and staff. So it takes both of us to kind of make the wheel turn, so thanks for providing this information.
Absolutely.
Excellent, anything else, Jose?
Not on this. I do have more updates, but not on this update. And then for second update, I have three, but for the second update, I just want to take a chance if we can get Jamie up here, our new community development director. Jamie comes to us from Clearwater, Florida, and she started this week, so wanted her to have the opportunity to just say hi, introduce herself to the community.
to have the opportunity to just say hi, introduce herself to the community and to the council.
Well, welcome, Jamie.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm on day two, so I am excited and I'm learning a lot from the, the staff that's here. It's been really great to get to know everyone, excited to get involved with the residents and get out there, engage with everyone, and, and start presenting to council when I have some more information to be able to have under my belt.
Excellent, well, welcome to the community, and there's a great staff and a lot of support here. If you need to ask questions, you're more than welcome to ask.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, I guess, oh, sorry, go ahead, Melissa.
I was just gonna say, we're so happy to have you. Thank you very much for joining the team. It is a great team that you're joining. Thank you.
Forty-eight hours, you should be a grizzled vet by now, but I'll give you a little bit of grace, but no. Maybe for the first time back, back in the kitchen earlier, so welcome. I'm, I think, you know, we're all so excited to have you onboard and looking forward to seeing what sort of growth, you know, we can go from here, so thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and then for the final updates, I'm going to pass it over to Mark Morgan, the city attorney, to give an update.
Thank you for the opportunity under City Manager Updates. As you're aware, after more than 30 years of access to the county jail, the sheriff, over the summer, unilaterally telegraphed or wrote a letter saying he was going to stop that and deny us access to the jail. And then the county engaged in what we consider to be unreasonable denial of access to the jails, through what we consider kind of unfair or bad faith negotiations to create a new IGA to use it. I was authorized, you guys, by you guys to seek some judicial intervention. I filed two lawsuits, one of which was directed at the sheriff, one of which is directed at the county. In the lawsuit against the sheriff, we were seeking preliminary injunctive relief. So until we can tip those matters to trial, we were asking the court to allow us or to force the sheriff to basically to maintain the status quo and let us continue to use the jail until we could actually get the matter to a full trial. The standard of preliminary hearing is different than a full trial. It happens very quickly, we prepared very quickly. I called four witnesses, the city manager, the former chief, current assistant city manager, the current deputy chief, and Judge Margison, who all testified today that without access to the jail, that the municipal court basically became ineffective. We argued that that was creating some harm to the city, because without being able to enforce our ordinances, the community standards that you guys employ by passing ordinances about what's acceptable in the city and what isn't, couldn't be enforced. Unfortunately, we suffered a setback today. The judge did not agree with the argument, she didn't see the imminent need to force the sheriff to do anything going. But it was definitely a setback for us, it was a setback for the community, and until further notice, we do not have access to the jail for our municipal court. And of course, you guys are aware of what a difference that has made in the year that Matthew Margison has been the judge. So again, super, super disappointing. From our perspective, the community was the big loser today. County attorneys were very aggressive, ordered on, unprofessional, in my opinion, in some cases, in the way they were treating our witnesses, but that's a little sour grapes, so take it with a grain of salt.
Well, thank you, Mark, for all your effort, and we'll just keep forging forward. Okay, so number six, committee and board reports.
Yeah, kick it off real quick. Had a Chamber of Commerce meeting yesterday. We, they had new board members. This is some of their first time at the meeting, so it was good to welcome new members. In addition, you know, we talked a little bit about the legislative session upcoming and what's coming in that's going to be impacting businesses locally and regionally and even statewide. So just things that, that the Chamber of Commerce is keeping a finger on the pulse with. Talked about leadership La Plata and how integral that has been to the community for the last 30 some years. We got Durango Rocks, which is going to be on February 20th, February 21st, one of those two. But they also have a day at the Capitol to advocate to our elected officials on, on matters that pertain to us down here, and they talked a lot about what is, what's been working for them from a programmatic standpoint. Also had a wildfire and watershed advisory committee meeting today. So that was really good. We, you know, we talked about, especially in, in light of what's been happening in LA and how it's so front of mind with us that we're probably going to meet a little bit further, you know, more often than quarterly. But yeah, we really addressed what sort of mitigation has been done, what funding mechanisms are available through grants with the state, and where some mitigation efforts are being, are being done, and how we are going to move forward with potentially, you know, busy fire season for, for DFPD and, and other, other agencies across the county. So really talked a lot about what, again, what our vision and purpose is about the WWPF, and then how we, you know, leverage some of this, you know, spotlight on wildfire and how we interact with wildfire, and how do we leverage that to really create impact locally? So really good meeting today.
I just, I just was going to announce I do have office hours tomorrow, 12 to 1 at the library. That's all.
All right.
I have some updates.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay, great.
Go, Jessica.
Here I go. All right, so on January 8th, we had the La Plata Economic Development Alliance Board Meeting. Mike French updated everyone with all that is going on in the prosperity office, so that was good. On January 10th, Jose and I did a presentation to La Plata Leadership about city government, and then we were asking them for ideas on how to build community trust and engage more parts of our community, and that was great interaction with La Plata Leadership. On January 13th, I chatted with fifth grade leadership at Riverview Elementary School about civic responsibility, community, and getting citizens involved. They're working on a food drive at Riverview, and so that was fun and exciting. And then on January 16th, I spoke at Hiding Rotary. There was lots of questions on the sales tax reauthorization, the city PD building, and then updating us on, or asking for updates on the city jail agreement with the county, which we just got an update on that. So that is all. Oh, and then I have a walk and roll coming up in a couple weeks. It is on February 3rd, which is a Monday at 10:00 AM. We are going to meet at the Durango Joe's on College, and we're going to walk kind of over there, over by the Horse Gulch Campus from Durango Joe's on College over to the Horse Gulch Campus. So that'll be fun. If you live in the neighborhood, come and join. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Okay, so on January 8th, I attended the Green Roundtable at the Powerhouse and found it very interesting talking to some of the residents about our efforts on sustainability. And then on the 9th, I attended the Southwest Economic Forum at Fort Lewis College and got that overview of the outlook for the state, the county, and the city. And it was really interesting. And we did have a COVID disruption in most of the flow chart. So most people think we'll get back on schedule with all our trends. They're all trending up. Okay, and then on the 12th, I did a presentation for the Kiwanis Club on the re, the 205 reauthorization, and that was pretty well received, because most people at the Kiwanis Club already understand the, the ballot issue. So basically, I just told them about what our intentions were and how we were going to apply the funds to the PD City Hall development. And that's all, let's see. Okay, so we have number seven, public comment on action items only. Do we have any public comments?
I think we've got a video that needs.
Yeah, we need to do the video, video, please, yeah.
Public comment is encouraged on agenda items set for consideration and a vote by the council tonight. Public comments on items not set for consideration by the council come later in the meeting. Please begin your comments by stating the agenda items set for a vote you intend to speak on, your full name, and if you are a resident of the city of Durango. Make your comments directly to the council. Do not expect a response from the council or staff. Comments are limited to three minutes per person, unless modified by the council. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Comments must be specific to the item you identified when you began your comments. Profanity, hate speech, personally derogatory remarks, speech unrelated to the item you identified, or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will be ruled out of order by the chair, and any remaining time will be forfeited by the speaker. Exceeding the time limit infringes on the rights of others and is out of order. Only a majority vote of the council can modify time limits. Please note, US sign up prior to the mayor calling the item on the agenda. Signing up after the item is called will result in your name not being called to speak.
Thank you. And Mayor, under 8.3.4, which is the resolution authorizing the cost of living adjustment for the old hire police pensioners, Dale Smith signed up for public comment.
Good evening, Madam Protrim, council members, city manager. My name's Dale Smith. I'm a retired captain from the Durango Police Department, and I'm here this evening representing the old hire police pension board on extended agenda item 8.3.4. On behalf of myself and Captain Gary McKnight, who is not able to be here this evening because he's recouping from a full knee replacement surgery. So I'm speaking on his behalf and on behalf of four of our beneficiaries, who are Chief Wiggins's wife, Carrie, Lieutenant Bill Noble's wife, Annette, Sergeant Dougie Emery's wife, Patty, and Sergeant Tony Archuleta's wife, Bernanette. We want to thank you for your consideration of the old hire police board's proposed recommendation for a cost of living increase. Captain McKnight and myself are the last two living retired officers on this plan. We both joined the police department in 1970, and 37 years later, we both retired in 2007. We started out as rookie patrolmen and promoted through the ranks to the second highest position in the department as a division commander with the rank of captain, a position that both of us had for over 20 years before we retired. When Gary and I joined the DPD, there were only 17 officers, including the two of us. We were provided with three sets of uniforms, a badge, a nameplate, a winter coat, and a uniform hat, but we were responsible for providing our own gun, which at that time was a .38 caliber revolver and six shooter, if you will, and ammunition, our own gun belt, handcuffs, baton, and flashlight. Bulletproof vests were not even thought about back in those days, and we didn't start wearing those until the, the 80s. There were three patrol cars. The cars did not have air conditioning, power windows, or power door locks, nor did the cars have protective screens between the front seat and the rear seat, which allowed the prisoners to kick at the back of our heads or spit on us. The cars were equipped with a single channel two-way radio, so we could talk to the dispatcher and other officers that were on duty. There were no portable radios for the officers, and again, those didn't come about until the mid 80s. So when we were out of the patrol car on an incident or a call, we were out on our own.
Excuse me, Dale, your time's coming up.
We had no contact with dispatcher or other officers. Calling for backup assistance was not possible unless we were able to get back to the car. And when we did get back to the car, we first had to wait for the police radio to power up, which normally took a couple of minutes.
Dale? Could I have a motion to extend?
I make a motion to extend to three minutes.
Oh, second vote?
Oh, I ran out.
Hi.
And here it is, right in front of me, covered up, sorry about that. I'll, I'll be quick, yeah. So any? What's that? All right, thank you, sir. So the cars were equipped with a two-way radio, so we could talk to the dispatchers and other officers. But once we got out of, out of the patrol cars, we were on our own, no contact with dispatchers or other officers. So and I mentioned, when we got back to the car, we had to wait to warm up the, the radios. And officers had to carry several dimes on themselves during that time period, just in case we had to call, locate a payphone booth and call the dispatcher or call home. So often, we had to respond to all levels of call, levels by ourselves, like domestic violence calls, which can be very dangerous, assault calls, death calls, bar fight calls, burglaries, and auto accidents, et cetera. Occasionally, during the middle of the dark night, we had to search businesses and warehouses alone, looking for possible burglars after finding an open door or windows. Over the years, as the city grew, so did the police department, and by the time we left, there were 58 officers, and of course, the equipment had advanced and, and was much better. I want to say, and I'll, I'll cut this short, I just want to say, police work is stressful and demanding, challenging, and can be very dangerous at times. I believe the only thing that's harder than being a police officer is being a police officer's spouse. The spouse has to spend nights alone, eat dinners alone, spend Christmas and other holidays alone, they have to attend family get togethers alone, and if there are children in the family, they have to take care of the children's needs, i.e. school activities. The biggest stress that a spouse has to live with is when their husband, wife, or partner puts on the uniform and leaves for work, they wonder if that might be the last time they see them. There is always the fear that there might be, become a time when they answer the door, and there will be two officers standing there to tell them that their spouse has been seriously injured or killed. That's why the beneficiaries are so important and appreciated by us, as they stood by and supported their husband for 25 years or more while they served this community. In closing, due to the current high inflation, a cost of living increase will be greatly appreciated and will assist all, all of us. Again, thank you for consideration of the proposal before you, and thank you for extending me another three minutes.
Thank you, Dale. We appreciate your service.
Thank you.
And Mayor, there's two individuals who signed up to speak under 8.3.5, which is the resolution authorizing the cost of living adjustment for old hire fire pensioners. And the first individual is Tom Kaufman.
I'm Tom Kaufman. I retired from the Durango Fire Department after 37 years of service to the department. I was the acting fire marshal at the time, or the fire marshal, that's the second highest level in the fire department at that time. I came on board in 1977, three years after the Main Street Fire of '74. During that fire, we lost a policeman and a fireman. After that fire, we lost two more firefighters that retired because of that fire, and they just couldn't deal with the knowledge of being on that fire. That created three openings for myself, Battalion Chief Chris Garcia, who will be talking after me, and Battalion Chief Mick Storrs. Throughout my career, I advanced through the ranks from a firefighter, making an initial wage of a $3.25 an hour, somewhere in that range. That was on a 24-hour basis. We were there for 24 hours, then you would go home, then you'd go back to work for 24 hours. I had two families at that time, my family at home and my two daughters, my wife, also had a family at work that I worked with day and night, 24 hours a day. We went to all kinds of things, just like the police department did. I can remember being on fires that were horrific. I can remember a young lady that was burned over 90% of her body, and I was the first one on scene, with not a sight I ever wanted to see again. I can remember going on missionary ridge fire and working with that crew and all the crews that came in to help, just like we have sent crews from our communities now out to LA to help with those firefighters, because they are overwhelmed. I can remember being in charge of things that I didn't want to do. I did a keynote address. I did a keynote address as a firefighter on the fire that we had on Main Street when we had the explosion. During that explosion, we put nine of our firefighters in the hospital. Luckily, no one was killed or injured on that. And I did keynotes on that all over the country, I mean, all over the state, and talking about what happened on that fire. So on behalf of the retired firefighters, we have Wayne Webb, who has actually retired before I came on the department. He was one of the guys that left because of the Main Street Fire. Wayne lives in Farmington with his wife in a nursing home. We have Jerry Peters, who lives here in Durango, Chris Garcia, who lives in Durango, and myself. I live up at the Dalton Ranch. So on behalf of the firefighters, I'd like to thank you all for your consideration on a cost of living increase for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then speaking on the same item is Chris Garcia.
Hello. My name is Cristobal Garcia. I served 23 years with Durango Fire and four years with the Durango Fire Protection District. I'm speaking in support of the cost of living increase for the old higher fire pensioners. I would like to thank council for their continuing support of first responders who continue to deal with injury, death, and destruction, even in a small town and county like La Plata County in Durango. We see a lot of things that most people don't see in their lives. So I appreciate your consideration of our request for a cost of living increase. Thank you.
And Mayor, those are all the folks who signed up to speak under Agenda comments on Agenda-related items.
All right. Thank you. So we'll move on to item number eight is the Consent Agenda. Could we have the reading of the Consent Agenda?
Yes, thank you. Item 8.1, Approval of Meeting Minutes. We have approval of minutes from the City Council Regular Meeting, January 7, 2025. Under 8.2, Final Reading of Ordinances, we have 8.2.1, Final Reading of Ordinance 2025-6 for easement of, or excuse me, easement for La Plata Electric Association to provide electric utility service to the Roots and Wings Aviation Hangar at the Durango-La Plata County Airport. 8.2.2 is Final Reading of Ordinance 2025-7, Amending in Pertinent Part, the Durango Code of Ordnances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 7, Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics, Section 2-205, Mandatory Standards of Ethical Conduct. Under 8.2.3, we have Final Reading of Ordinance 2025-8, Amending in Pertinent Part, the Durango Code of Ordnances, Chapter 3, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 3.1, Definitions. And then, under 8.3, Adoption of Resolutions by Consent, we have Resolution 2025-7, Authorizing City Staff to Submit an Application to Designate 201 East 12th Street, the Historic High School, as a landmark, as a historic landmark. 8.3.2 is Resolution 2025-8, Approving Courtroom Security Policies and Procedures for the Durango Municipal Court. Item 8.3.3 is Resolution 2025-9, Confirming the Approval of the Conceptual Plan Development for the West Side Triangle Mobile Home Parks Redevelopment, 21062 and 21134 West Highway 160. Item 8.3.4 is Resolution 2025-10, Authorizing the Cost of Living Adjustment for the Old Higher Police Pensioners Based on the 2024 Actuarial Study. 8.3.5 is Resolution 2025-11, Authorizing the Cost of Living Adjustment for the Old Higher Fire Pensioners Based on the 2024 Actuarial Study. 8.4, under 8.4, Approval of Other Administrative Items, we have 8.4.1, which is Approval of an Implied Consent Agreement for Utility Services to 2526 County Road 240. There are no items under Request for Public Hearing. And then, under 8.6, Introduction of Ordinances, we have 8.6.1, which is an introduction of an ordinance for an easement for La Plata Electric Association to provide electric utility service to a Tesla Supercharger Station at the Durango Transit Center. And then, 8.6.2 is Introduction of an Ordinance, Amending in Pertinent Part, the Durango Code of Ordnances, Chapter 3, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 3-19, Takeout and Delivery Permits. And then, there are no items under Request for Excused Absences.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Are there any items that any counselor would like to pull from the Consent Agenda? Seeing no items being pulled from the Consent Agenda, can I have a motion?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
One second. Could we have a vote?
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
And Counselor Bosnitz?
Yes.
All righty. Item number nine... Oh, sorry, we don't have that. Item number 10, Public Hearing, Action Items with No Discussion Items. No items?
There's no public hearing items.
There's no public hearing items. Okay. Number 11, Action Items Resolutions. And that would be Mike French, 11.1.
And just to confirm, 11.1 is Resolution 2025-12, Authorizing the merger of all operations of the City of Durango Welcome Center and Durango Area Tourism into the City of Durango Municipal Corporation.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Mayor, City Councilors, Mike French, with the housing, housing and tourism economic opportunity. I'm here to discuss the resolution authorizing the merger of all operations of the Welcome Center and Durango Area Tourism into the City of Durango Municipal Corporation. I'd like to start with talking about the strategic alignment to the city. As previously stated, I have been able to gather the three entities and start to work on a mission. That mission statement reads, "We provide outstanding services and experiences for the entire community to enhance the quality of life of residents and celebrate a multi-generational community by promoting equitable access to attainable housing, fostering inclusive economic growth, and elevating the city as a vibrant destination." If you look at our city mission and vision, this very, very, very strongly aligns to it and even lifts some of the language verbatim. A little history of how we got here today. In November of 2024, which was a couple of months ago, the City Manager received a letter from the Visit Durango Board requesting consideration for a merger. Barbara Bowman, in October of 2024, was hired and extended a contract by the City of Durango to serve as the interim executive director. And then recently, Grace Vale was hired by Visit Durango as a part-time person to manage all the other part-time personnel at the Welcome Center. We have drafted and have signed an MOU to collaborate on a framework to transition. This was signed by the Visit Durango Board in December of 2024. And then, last but not least, the Welcome Center lease has actually been renewed. It has been renewed since we drafted this presentation. And we looked to renew the subleases with our strategic partners, and that being bid, and Fort Lewis College in the Welcome Center as well. In November of 2024, I was hired as a full-time position into the city with the title of Prosperity Officer and started working closely with the three entities to develop that mission organizational structure and goals and objectives, and continued the work I had as a contractor with all the projects and initiatives within those three entities. The overall benefits of a merger starts with strong fiscal oversight. I think that's been a request and definitely something that our community has asked for. There will be efficiencies to both the city services as well as to Visit Durango, starting with sustainability, community engagement, events, and many other initiatives. Next steps, there'll be two Visit Durango employees integrated into the city. One is a full-time employee that would integrate into sustainability. The second is a full-time employee integrated into community engagement. As much as I'd like to keep Barbara Bozeman here, she is under contract, short-term contract, so we need to look to hire a replacement for her and would start to do so. The Durango Welcome Center employees and facility be integrated into the city, and that consists of part-time employees. Facility management of the Welcome Center, which is currently with the Visit Durango. And then, last but not least, we would look to start to draft an ordinance to present to council at a later date establishing a prosperity office. So with that, staff would like to recommend the following motion. I approve to Resolution R-2025-0012, authorizing the merger of all operations of the City of Durango Welcome Center and the Durango Area Tourism into the City of Durango Municipal Corporation. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution R-2025-12, authorizing the merger of all operations of the City of Durango Welcome Center and Durango Area Tourism into the City of Durango Municipal Corporation.
One second. Could we get a vote?
Should we discuss?
Or you want to discuss first?
Discussion. You have to leave a discussion first.
Mike, sorry to pull you back up here. I think I already know the answer to this, but maybe just for the record, you know, do we foresee any sort of transition hiccups as we integrate this organization from the nonprofit that it was into the city in terms of the services they were providing previously?
I don't have a crystal ball, but I can tell you that there's very strong support, both from the Visit Durango Board as well as their staff. I have asked some community members and stakeholders, as well as strategic partners, for their opinion, and I've received resounding support for this merger. I do think that there's going to be a few things that we're going to learn as we integrate, you know, 20 some odd people. But I think the biggest challenge is going to be logistics around IT, software, et cetera, et cetera. The Visit Durango has literally 14 paid data software subscriptions, which is going to be a huge benefit to us. They have analytic software. How we integrate all that software is going to take a little bit of time. So we likely would have maybe two networks or two systems. That's where I think we're going to have the biggest challenges. I don't think there's going to be challenges in terms of personnel, in terms of organizational structure, in terms of support, management. I think all that's been fairly well-fedded.
And Mike, if I may, and Counselor, would you just add, just to make sure, that part of that ordinance that would kind of complete the merger that comes up, there will be a Tourism Advisory Commission that would be set up. That'd be similar to the Airport Commission for the council to establish as well, to help with a lot of that transition portion of it. So that'll also be coming as a piece to that later.
Yeah, we've started working on what that structure would look like, started drafting bylaws that people could start to give us some input on. And obviously, we'd have strong community representation on that tourism commission.
Awesome. Well, I very much look forward to the next chapter of what tourism looks like to all of us and how we can all be more accountable to the public and also, you know, try to get, you know, tourists in town. So thank you for all the work and getting this done.
Any more discussion?
Question without trying to put you on the spot?
Yes, absolutely. Please do.
Funding in the past. Can you tell us what the funding has been approximately annually from the City of Durango to Visit Durango?
Yeah, I actually can. So it's 55% of the total lodgers tax.
55% of the lodgers tax.
Which is 5.55%. That translates to about $2.4 million to Visit Durango. This year, it's projected to be $2.6. And then, that's the city allocation. And then, there historically has been an allocation from the county.
Right.
We're going to take a haircut to that allocation in 2025. Historically, that's been close to $900,000. We expect it to transition to about $270,000.
That was my second question, was the La Plata County funding towards tourism. So the, you, just to reiterate or make sure I understand, their previous contributions towards tourism has been around $900,000 annually, and that's expected to go down to 200 and...
It'll be 30% versus 100%.
Okay.
So if 100% last year was a little over or close to $900,000, I'm estimating it to be about 270. And I know the math doesn't work out, but I think there's going to be a little bit of a lull.
Okay. And that 30% is based on what factor?
That was a bond. I'm sorry. That was at the...
Reauthorization of...
Or an election of... Rogers Tax 1A last year.
I got approval for that.
In November of last year.
So that will continue.
Excuse me?
So that will continue?
Yes. Yep.
Interesting.
Yep.
Well, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, in regard to services, then, are we going to go ahead and make adjustments to what kind of services are provided in the county since they're cutting back on their contribution to Visit Durango?
Yeah, that's a great question. So obviously, the scope of work will change, have to be adjusted. But when you look at how the destination is marketed, it's really marketed as a destination. And so, you really can't pull apart marketing county assets versus city assets. It's very difficult to do. So we can actually look at where those funds were allocated and modify a scope of work as best as we can, whether it's grants or anything else that the county participated in. But when it comes to sales and marketing of the destination, we would move forward with a very similar campaign. I felt like it was very successful. And, you know, it garnered an increase in lodgers tax. And I think the most important thing is that we try to maintain that revenue source across the state and across the other like communities. They're seeing a softness and actually forecasting a softness in visitations and lodgers tax.
Well, I think in the future, we should probably look into how we can make that adjustment because if we're paying more money for it, we should get more of the benefit.
I completely agree. And I think the way we do that is continue to market the destination well, really create a strong brand for the destination. The destination brand is Durango. You know, you don't have Visit La Plata County or Visit La Plata. It's Visit Durango. So it's a mutually beneficial arrangement. We'll have to do, you know, more with less. And I think we can do it.
All right. Thank you. Are there any more questions?
Can I make a... I think we're going to talk about the same thing. Mayor Buell, who's online, asked me to make a clarification here. Way before there's any discussion of a merger between Visit Durango and the city... Mayor Buell, who was mayor pro tem Buell at the time, was looking for office space. She came to my office, asked me if it would be a problem to rent office space from Visit Durango. Um, I provided her an opinion, a memo. I did investigation. I emailed and asked if the rent would be at fair market. It was. I asked if any influence was being used to try to get in front of anyone else in front of her to rent that. The answer was yes, it's fair market value. No, um, there was one person looking, but they backed out. So there was no one else waiting to rent this space. She asked me, I was basically trying to give her opinions whether or not it's a conflict. It's not a conflict to her to rent that space. There's no economic benefit to her. She paid fair market. She disclosed it at a public meeting, I think, around that period of time. But there is an individual in our community who's trying to make a living, you know, selling or getting advertisements on a on a website of, you know, conspiracy theories about government. And he's made some accusations that there was something nefarious about that arrangement. There absolutely is not. With this merger, I I'm afraid that allegation will come again. Um, I've encouraged her to vote on this resolution because it is not directly related to the lease of that space. It was already in place when it started to happen. Um, at the point where the city would take over lease, that will come in front of the council and at that time I would advise her. There still would not be a conflict as long as she's not getting an economic advantage from it. Um, but she should disclose it and it would be, you know, at her political decision at that point, whether she votes on it or not. But at this point, this is a resolution just authorizing the merger. The lease stays in the name of, or the sublease stays in the name of the counters. I think you mentioned that earlier, Mike.
Yeah, we um, we actually, in the lease renewal, the lease renewal language has that we have the ability, when assigned. To take over any previous sublease agreements. Uh, and with with uh anything other than existing sublease agreements, we would have to go back to landlord and and request. Authorization uh for that. I don't foresee that happening, uh with the exception of the existing subleases.
Right, but the history is everything has been disclosed. Nothing has been concealed. And as we move forward in that process, we will continue to do that. And like Mike just said, this is just, we are honoring the sublease that was negotiated prior. Based on the advice of council, based on the fact there's no conflict, based on the fact that it's market value, based on the fact that she didn't use any influence to get ahead of anybody in line to lease the place. But after a while, you know, when those allegations are coming, so I wanted to make sure that got on the record tonight. And then I did advise uh Mayor Buell that she would be um within her rights to vote on this resolution. But when a lease change does come, that we would, we would disclose that again and we hear options to recuse herself at that time. But it's just not necessary tonight.
Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mike, for the update and I look forward to uh. Seeing the successes we have with more financial oversight um over the um visit Durango operations.
Any other questions? Yeah, we're good. Thank you.
All righty, can we have a vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Buell?
Yes.
All right, number twelve, first consideration of ordinances. Tyler?
And so item twelve point one is first consideration of an ordinance for an easement for La Plata Electric Association to provide lighting to the Animus River Trail.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Tyler Michael with Community Development here this evening to present this proposal for an easement for LPEA. To provide electric utility service that will serve lighting along the Animus River Trail. As always, here under the framework of our mission, vision and values. And this proposed easement, uh staff believes is in alignment with the strategic goal of reliable infrastructure and community connectivity. Here's a context map showing where the proposed easement would be located. And in a little bit greater detail, uh this is the north end of Nature's Oasis, the red line here being the proposed underground electric utility line. Important to note here that the proposed easement does not cover the entire length of the red line. It only covers the portion of city-owned land that this red line would be transecting. Um, and the city-owned property line is about uh where that um overhead power line can be seen, sort of faint white line. Running there uh through the red line and then where the. Proposed utility line intersects the actual river trail, there is also a new transformer being proposed uh to actually service the eventual lighting along the river trail. So this is the exhibit, the surveyed exhibit of the easement. The the box there represents the tract of city-owned land. And again, it is the the easement in being considered tonight is just covering this tract of city-owned land. It is a twenty-foot wide easement that's being proposed, about a hundred and sixty-eight linear feet in distance. And it is being proposed along the existing spur trail there um for ease of access and convenience of any future maintenance that may be required to service this. This is the uh trail corridor that would um be served by this easement, uh the the lighting that would be served by this easement. This is referred to as segment A. There's several different trail improvement projects um in the in the. Next few years being considered, segment A improvements are not currently budgeted for twenty twenty-five. But uh this easement, if it is approved, would help lay the groundwork to make these uh improvements actually take place when it is budgeted. And in overview, uh this is a proposed underground power line running from Nature's Oasis to the intersection of the river trail. Uh, there will be a new transformer installed along the river trail that will actually provide the the service to the the lighting infrastructure itself. And the the location was selected for convenience and for minimal disturbance along an existing spur trail that that connects to the Nature's Oasis Shopping Plaza. And staff believes that the the benefits to the city and residents um will be significant, including uh increased navigability. Uh, increased safety, both real and perceived, and hopefully this will encourage folks to um use the the river trail uh more as it is a great asset for the city. This item was introduced at January seventh meeting and it's being um considered here tonight. If approved, it will be uh on final consideration on the February fourth agenda. To date, uh staff has not received any public comments in advance um related to this easement and I've. Provided a recommended motion there for your consideration. Welcome any questions you may have.
All right, do we have a motion?
I uh move to approve the first consideration of ordinance to create an easement for La Plata Electric Association to provide electric utility service to the Animus River Trail.
I'll second.
Discussion? Vote?
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yazi?
Yes.
And Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
All right, so we'll move on to item thirteen, public comment on city matters not scheduled for vote tonight.
Public comment is encouraged on city-related matters, even if they are not set for a vote by the council on tonight's agenda. Please begin your comments by stating your city-related topic, your full name, and if you are a resident of the city of Durango, make your comments directly to the council. Do not expect a response from the council or staff. Comments are limited to three minutes per person unless modified by council. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Comments must be specific to city matters. Profanity, hate speech, personally derogatory remarks, or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will be ruled out of order by the chair and any remaining time will be forfeited by the speaker. Exceeding the time limit infringes on the rights of others and is out of order. Only a majority vote of the council can modify time limits. Please note, you must sign up prior to the mayor calling the item on the agenda. Signing up after the item is called will result in your name not being called to speak.
Thank you, and the first uh individual who signed up for uh for non-agenda items is Enrique Orozco Perez.
Nothing like a board meeting and then coming to talk to y'all right away. Thank you very much. Um, good evening, uh members of the Durango City Council. My name is Enrique Arturo Orozco Perez. And I am the co-executive director of Compañeros Four Corners Immigrant Resource Center. Sadly, I do not live in Durango after nine years because I was pushed out by the high cost of housing and now I live in Bayfield. But my work is done in this area. At Compañeros, we work tires tirelessly to support and empower immigrant families in Southwest Colorado. By addressing systemic barriers such as access to housing, education and economic opportunities. We are joining the effort to raise the minimum wage because it aligns with our mission to build a thriving and equitable community. This initiative directly impacts the family we serve by providing them with the financial stability needed to live and contribute fully to Durango's vibrant local economy. Uh, let's talk about the legal framework. Colorado law House Bill nineteen twelve ten explicitly grants municipalities the power to increase the minimum wage by up to fifteen percent. It's in your authority. Uh, above the state minimum wage. Importantly, implemented this measure would cost the city of Durango zero dollars to enforce. As wage regulations are monitored and regulated by the state, this is our unique opportunity for the council to take a bold step. That directly impacts the economic well-being of our community without placing additional burdens on local government resources. Kind of rude. Economic impact on the immigrant community. Uh, Durango's immigrant community is a vital part of our local economy, whether you believe it or not. Many immigrants work in essential industry industries such as hospitality, food service, construction and childcare. Which often offer minimum wage positions. However, the current minimum wage fails to meet the rising cost of living in Durango, particularly housing and childcare. Raising the minimum wage would provide these hard-working families and increase financial stability. Reducing the number of immigrant families that must choose between paying rent and buying groceries. Consider this, an increase of even fifteen percent to the minimum wage would provide a full-time worker uh earning fourteen forty-two, which is the state minimum wage. An additional eighty-six dollars per week, a difference that could cover a portion of rent, medical expenses, school supplies, what have you. This economic relief would reverberate throughout the entire community as immigrant workers reinvest their earnings locally, benefiting businesses and services in our local community. Let's talk about the local business because we know there's always pushback to this from local business, but this would support local businesses during shoulder season. Durango businesses face economic slowdowns during the shoulder season when tourist traffic declines. During these periods, local spending becomes even more crucial to sustaining businesses when worker, when workers have more disposable income. They can spend more on goods and services and keep local businesses afloat.
Enrique, your time's up. Enrique, your time's up.
Thank you. Um, I think this is important for y'all to consider. Also, I've emailed each of you about housing initiatives. Thank you, uh Olivier, and thank you, Dave, for responding to me.
And the next individual signed up to speak on non-agenda items is Karen Pontius.
Hi there. My name is Karen Pontius. I live at two eighty-eight Animus View Drive in Durango. I speak in favor of the city of Durango raising the minimum wage by fifteen percent as allowed by a, the twenty nineteen law that Enrique mentioned. Also, I agree with everything that Enrique says, so let's add that. Again, this is free. There's no cost for the city. There are so many issues our residents struggle with and um. Even a fifteen percent raise would help immensely. The minimum wage is now fourteen eighty-one. It just got raised forty cents. Fifteen percent would add another two dollars and twenty-two cents an hour for a total of seventeen oh three an hour, which I think McDonald's is making seventeen, something like that. I live in the Animus View Mobile Home Park Co-op and I'm on the board of directors. Most of our a hundred and twenty households would welcome this raise. About ninety-six of our households are under the low-income bracket, which is eighty percent of area median income or AMI. Half of our households fall into very low income bracket, which is fifty percent of AMI. And a third of our hundred and twenty households fall into the extremely low-income category of thirty percent of AMI. Life is challenging for the majority of our residents. I've worked with uh Westside Mobile Home Park as well and there are seventy households are majority low-income as well, but I don't have the actual statistics. Uh, majority of those residents are Durango's essential workforce. The city has assisted Westside in many ways. Now we're asking that you have helped raise their income a bit by requiring a fifteen percent increase. Durango has many forward-thinking businesses who recognize that paying a living wage is necessary to maintain their business, so they pay well above the minimum wage. The Thrive program made a huge impact there. We are now asking that you raise the minimum wage in the city to bring those other businesses on board with the same theory that a rising tide lifts all boats. Now that Durango has a prosperity officer, it's my wish that the city council adopt this increase as a way of helping that officer do his job. Let's improve the quality of our workforce's lives and I'd like to ask that we. Get a study session in advance of getting on the agenda. Thank you.
And the next individual who signed up to speak is online and that is Nina DeSalvo. Nina, if you unmute yourself, you should be able to speak. Nina, your microphone is muted.
Is Nina ready to give public input? All righty, no response. Let's move on to um. Other new business.
Oh, Mayor, there's a couple more uh folks who signed up.
Okay.
And maybe we could come back to Nina. Um, the next individual, uh Lindsay Fallon and Lindsay indicated that they are online as well.
Lindsay?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Lindsay Fallon. Um, I live in Carbondale, Colorado, but I'm actually representing my colleague. Um, David Albrechtta, who's local to Durango but unable to join you all tonight. So my name is David Albrechtta. I'm a local employment lawyer and have been living and practicing employment law in Durango for ten years. I have dedicated my career to advocating for employees' rights. I am here as part of the Durango Forward Coalition. We are a group of workers, businesses, advocates and nonprofits who support workers' rights and are here to ask the city council to raise Durango's minimum wage. I have represented many employees in Durango and Southwest Colorado who have experienced some form of wage theft, including not being paid a minimum wage. I meet with employees on a regular basis who are impacted by wage laws. I know that raising the minimum wage would positively impact Durango's workforce. Here's the issue. An individual earning Colorado's current minimum wage cannot afford to live in Durango. The current minimum wage of fourteen eighty-one per hour, this amounts to an annual salary of approximately thirty thousand eight hundred and four dollars before taxes and withholdings. Also, this is only if someone gets paid for forty hours per week for fifty-two weeks per year, meaning no time off and consistent full-time hours. This is the best-case scenario for an hourly worker. The take-home amount will not provide for basic necessities such as rent and groceries in Durango's current market. I have attached the MIT Living Wage Calculator for La Plata County, which shows that the living wage for a single person with no children to be twenty-four dollars an hour. Our current minimum wage is ten dollars short of what it costs to live here. As you know, this is forcing our workforce to move out of town and travel to work. This is setting us up to turn Durango into Telluride, Aspen and other communities where the workforce cannot afford to live where they work. While affordable housing efforts and other policy items that will soon be housed in the prosperity office are appreciated. They do not address the underlying issues that workers simply are not paid enough. City council can make this change now with no increase in taxes or additional costs to the city. Our call to action, in twenty nineteen, the Colorado legislature passed a law giving power back to local governments to raise their own minimum wage. We are asking city council to stand on the side of our Durango workers. by raising our local minimum wage. It can only be raised by 15% per year, so the most it could be raised in the first year is $2.22 to $17.03. City council has the sole authority to make this change. City council talks a lot about prosperity, affordability, economic opportunity, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. Standing up for our local workforce and raising the minimum wage accomplishes all of these stated goals without any additional cost. Conclusion: Raising the minimum wage is a vital step for equity and prosperity in Durango. We ask that the city council schedule a study session on this important issue so that we can present additional detailed information and that this be put on the agenda as soon as possible so the city council can increase the minimum wage to support our local workers. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to the council tonight.
The next individual here in person is Aaron Hackett.
Hello. I actually was going to read David's statement, but there was some confusion. And Lindsay did a great job, so I'm just going to wing it. I am Aaron Hackett. I live here in Durango. I've spent a lot of time on campus at Fort Lewis College registering young people to vote and talking to young people about their experiences here in Durango. And I like to consider myself a young person myself, even though I'm almost 30. I've found that a lot of young people have dealt with all kinds of issues, whether it's having multiple roommates, being paid low wages, struggling to get by if you live in town, different things like that. But it is often young people who work in the service industries and the retail industries. And without these workers coming to work and making these businesses function, we talked about tourism. There is no tourism industry without the workers that show up. So I think we really do need to raise the minimum wage. We need to make Durango a place where young people can come, raise families, work, and not have to work two, three jobs or have two, three roommates, where people can just work one job and get by. And that's the ultimate goal. And I think that as the tourism industry expands for Durango, that the workers who make it run, particularly young people, should have a bigger piece of that pie. Thank you.
And the next individual here in person is Beatriz Garcia.
Hello. Thank you for having me here today, this evening. My name is Beatriz Garcia. I live in Durango, and I've been living here since 2018. And now I work with a nonprofit, that's a statewide nonprofit, Colorado Immigrants Rights Coalition. And I partner with a lot of statewide nonprofits. And in this case, I am commenting in behalf of other organizations where the representative tells us about the importance of the impact that will have the minimum wage in our community if we propose a policy that will support that. Colorado Fiscal Institute is a statewide nonpartisan nonprofit working to ensure that our state and local economies promote a widespread economy and prosperity. I think council should consider a minimum wage boost to make this official agenda item because this will promote benefit not only for employees, but also for businesses. And there is so many facts that already my friends and community members have mentioned already. But I wanted to also highlight some of the importance in the businesses that we have. And talking about the prosperity group that I think is promoting the city. Not only multiple data shows that small businesses are in harm, and we see major benefits to workers. The minimum wage, if it is increased, will also overall increase the consumer spending and encourage more equitable growth by helping close the wage gaps facing historically marginalized groups like workers of color and women. So I wanted to emphasize that because for me, as a woman of color, it's very important. So finally, I encourage you to listen to the proposed that Karen said, that we would love to have a session, what it's called? A study session where we can go deeply in these numbers that I don't want to repeat again, but we know this is important and it will have an impact in our community. So I hope you consider this. Thank you so much.
And we could circle back to Nina DeSalvo online. Nina, if you're able to unmute, we should be able to hear your public comment.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello? You can. Oh, wonderful, hi. I'm sorry I wasn't able to unmute before. But good evening. Thank you so much for your time tonight. My name is Nina DeSalvo, and I'm a Denver resident, and I'm the policy director with Toreds Justice, a nonprofit law firm focused on advancing economic equity. I'm here to encourage Durango to consider adopting a local minimum wage that reflects the city's cost of living, keeps workers in the community, and supports a vibrant local economy. Adopting a local minimum wage is important to raising wages for some of the most vulnerable workers in the community, ensuring that workers can afford Durango rent, shop at Durango stores, and keep their kids in Durango schools. It's also key to leveling the playing field for the many local businesses in Durango that already pay wages higher than the state minimum. Economic data also indicates that minimum wage increases give the economy a boost overall because they drive consumer spending and create jobs. Putting more money into working families' pockets is one of the quickest ways to increase demand, spurring economic growth that allows businesses to expand. One national study recently found that minimum wage policies enacted between 2012 and 2021 led to $87.6 billion in additional annual economic output. Denver's implementation of a local wage in January 2020 demonstrated that these national studies are consistent with the results that can be achieved when Colorado municipalities adopt local minimum wages. The Colorado Department of Labor and Employment analyzed the effects of implementation of Denver's local wage in its 2023 Local Minimum Wage Report and found that after implementation of Denver's local wage, the city's unemployment rate dropped more than any comparator jurisdictions, and wages across the city rose more than they did in comparator jurisdictions and more than they did in the state as a whole. Durango can achieve these results without raising prices in the local economy. As the Economic Policy Institute has explained, higher minimum wages have little impact on overall inflation simply because for most of the things that U.S. households buy, domestic labor is not a significant portion of the cost. Indeed, a recent study analyzing nearly four decades of data found that a 10% increase in the minimum wage led to a tiny 0.36 increase in price. I'm here tonight to encourage Durango to adopt a local wage that reflects the city's cost of living and its commitment to economic equity. A Durango local minimum wage would stimulate the local economy while helping to ensure that the city's lowest-wage workers can make ends meet and afford to stay in the Durango community. Thanks so much for your time tonight, and sorry for the snafu with Zoom.
And Mayor, that was all the folks who had signed up online to speak.
All right, so we completed that portion? Okay.
Make a motion. Does this bend the rules to allow Darren to come up and speak before public comment?
Second. Do we have a vote? I'm good.
Yep.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity. I submitted my application, but internet service and hesperus isn't always the most reliable thing. So my topic today is early childcare in Durango. And I live in La Plata County and work in Durango. I'm a father of two kids who were recently directly affected by the near closure of The Growing Place, a Durango daycare facility that then subsequently led me on a three-month journey better understanding Durango's early childcare situation. I connected with Heather Hawk, who's presented to you all the executive director of Early Childhood Council of La Plata County, looked at some of her data, including the data about La Plata County's average waitlist for infants and toddlers is typically more than 11 months. For preschoolers, it's roughly six to 11 months. And that all current childcare facilities in Durango are at 100% capacity. And the newest facility that hasn't even opened yet is already full with 20 families on the waitlist. What I've also learned as far as early childcare facilities that they need four things to succeed, which I'll term the four Ps. First one is people. We have fantastic early childcare providers in Durango. Amy Eckert, the director of Growing Place, some consider her the best and most qualified daycare professional in all of Colorado, if not the country. We also have numerous former directors of early childcare facilities who are looking to stand up new facilities, and I'll speak about their efforts from here on out. The second P is payment. For some of these facilities that these folks are trying to stand up, we do have donors lined up to provide that payment. We have community partnerships in place to help fund these new facilities. The third P is property. We have a couple viable commercial properties in line that would help some of these directors stand up a new facility with a child headcount of 40 to 50 kids, which would be an incredible asset for a community. The fourth P, which is the sticking point, is process. These directors, they went through the pre-application process with the city in early March. 10 months later, they were finally permitted for an interim facility. It took them 10 months to go through the permitting process, which is step one. It took them $10,000 of their own money upfront to simply get permitted for an interim facility with headcount of 12 kids. Part of the delay was partially due to high turnover at the city community development department and no continuation of the process from one employee to another during after resignations. They had no clear pathway to success, no clear checklist. There were changing regulations depending on who they spoke to at the city. What I've learned through this process is that we have a process that does not consider early childcare. There's additional future challenge that we're going to have to deal with, which is that almost all Durango early childcare facilities are grandfathered into the 2018 Fire Code and current building codes. If any of those directors retire or sell the business, those buildings immediately become out of compliance. Our community is going to face an imminent bottleneck for our community unless we can accomplish the following: a continuation of this conversation with the city community development department; a detailed start-to-finish checklist of how to stand up an early childcare facility in Durango; keeping well-qualified personnel in our area and maintaining these young families. I'll close by citing the city of Durango's vision statement, which is "a multi-generational community, which is authentic, diverse, engaged, thriving, and environmentally responsible." Now, either that vision statement just looks good on paper or is something we truly believe in. I'd like to think it's the latter. Thank you.
All righty, so let's move on to item 14, other new business. Item 14.1.
Yeah, that's an item I brought up, I think, to discuss it. I'll have to make a motion. So I'll make a motion to place a resolution on the February 4th regular city council meeting directing the city manager and staff to provide an update and presentation on resources provided by the city associated with the current homeless population regarding safety, shelter, and addressing impacts while they are homeless during the winter months, including presentations by guest speakers such as, for example, Mana, Nina, Minia, Housing Solutions, Churchens, and the warming center on the same topic.
Just a point of clarification. Don't we already have that information on the website of terms of like what we are providing?
We do have a human resources on the homelessness.
We do have that resource page. And then, if I remember correctly, we have $3,807.75 towards
Point of order.
These.
Point of order trumps. If he requests a point of order, you should recognize him as the chair as to what the point of order is.
Point of order. Would you like to discuss this?
It's his point of order. He needs to say what the concern is.
This is a motion on table. It needs a second, and then you can discuss. So if there's no second, there's no discussion. That is a right that is always refused to me. So I think that applies to all of council.
He's correct. The motion needs a second before they can any further discussion.
Is there any second? Hearing none. We'll move on to the second item. Okay, this is 14.2. And I'm making this motion for council to consider a letter that I received from Randy Black, our fire chief, concerning a call to action about the need to prepare for the upcoming fire season. And I think that we should at least discuss this at city council because we're in an extreme, dry winter season. And the fact that we could have fires and the tragedy of the fire that's happening in Southern California adds to the emergency situation. So I make the motion that we put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
All second.
Now the big discussion.
Is there any discussion?
If I can, just from a staff perspective to understand exactly what would be requested if this does get put on the agenda, I would imagine that it would be a presentation by Chief Black to the council about his letter. Okay.
All right, could we have a vote?
Mayor Protam Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Buell?
Yes.
All right, so we move on to I actually have another item under new business. Is that okay?
Yes.
So for the next council meeting, under new business, I would like to request an ordinance